Consent agenda, which includes council minutes from October 7th, EDA minutes from October 13th, HRA minutes from October 8th, Library minutes from October 14th, Planning Commission minutes from October 14th. There is also an exempt gambling permit from the Wyndham Fire Department Relief Association for an event set for May 16th of 2026, and an exempt gambling permit from the Wyndham Youth Hockey Association for an event on December 10th. Both are raffles of 2025 and the regular bills. So if anybody has any additions, corrections, questions? If not?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next up, department heads. Are there any department heads that would like to speak?
Tim Snyder, Community Center Director. I just want to put in a plug for some of the events we got coming up in the next couple of weeks. Tomorrow, from 12 to 7, is the Blood Mobile, put on by the American Red Cross and the Women of Today. And then this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, from 9 to 3, we got the Wayne Carlson Memorial Gun and Knife Show. Always been, I think it's been going on for 27-plus years. And then next Friday on Halloween, we got our Trail of Terror up at the Community Center from 4 to 8 p.m. So lots of things going on up at the Community Center in the next week.
Tim, tell me a minute about your Trail of Terror event. Who's the target market for that? Young kids?
We charge for, we say 12 and under. So 12 and under is $3, adults are $4, groups of four are $10. So it's not, terror might be a little bit exaggerating it a little bit. It's not that scary. We don't get into blood guts score, head detachments and that stuff. We keep it pretty PG-friendly.
Thank you, I saw your marketing, it looks good. Any other department heads that want to speak at this time?
Kristen Porth, Wyndham Ambulance Director. I have nothing fun like Tim. Just thought I'd take the opportunity, I'm actually around tonight and not on call or on a transfer. So just give you a little bit of update on what's going on with our ambulance. There is a grant in the agenda for tonight for a resolution from the council. We had applied for, so you'll see that coming up. We had EMS grant earlier, actually end of 2024. We're spending that in 2025. We got new radials with majority of those funds. And we're putting those already in the rigs and most of them have been handed out to our crew. So got some funds left that I'm working on some equipment quotes and things like that to spend the rest of that balance. Coming up for next year, we're going to be looking at replacing two COTS and our D-FIBs. The two COTS that we have coming up are 2007 and a 2008. So they've been, have worked well for us, but it's time to start replacing. And our D-FIBs are 10-ish years old, maybe just slightly over 10. So we have put that in for next year because we're not redoing any ambulances. So get those rotated out. Status-wise for run calls right now compared to 2024, it's today's date, without any more calls, we are plus 110. So when I say we're busy, we're very busy. That is it for the ambulance.
Just a quick question, on your D-FIBs, when you get new ones, what do you do with your old ones?
We have the option to trade them in. The value, of course, is fairly minimal.
Yeah.
But...
Could we take them and transition them to some other part of the city type of thing?
Probably not. I mean, they're big monitors, so they do more than, they're more than just a portable. They do blood pressures and oxygen saturations, 12 leads. A little more advanced than a general public would use.
If we had some general, we could put a malt where, you know, on the square or something like that. Where we have events.
These are big.
Yeah. Some more advanced when we need to. Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Are you 110 runs over all of 2024 and you still have two-plus months to go?
Correct.
Yeah, and we spoke earlier and just thank you guys for all you do. I know it's busy and I, for one, appreciate you, I think everybody does. So thank you guys for all you do. Any other department heads that want to speak at this time? Okay, we will move on to number three, the 18th Street Storm Sewer, 18th Avenue, I'm sorry, 18th Avenue Storm Sewer Improvement Project. And we have Denny and Mike here with Johnson Engineering Group. And they will give us an overview of the project. And then we will open a public hearing and everyone will have time for questions if needed. Welcome, guys, thank you.
Oh, it's on, okay. Like Dennis Johnson, Johnson Engineering Group. Steve, if you could turn to diagram one. So can I look? I couldn't do that. Okay, this is the watershed that you guys are all aware of. It goes, here's the city limit line. And so you can see that follows, it doesn't follow the city limit line. It's, there's quite a bit of acres outside of the city limits. But tonight, what we're talking about is the area inside the city limits. If you can go to diagram three. So this is the original, all the culverts that were in the original 18th Avenue. 18th Avenue originally was a township road. The water used to go from, this area ran all the way to the north through some culverts, then came across on the east side and then followed in, there used to be three, while they're still there. There's three culverts that went across the road. But this entire area went through three culverts. Now, the flow to these two on the east end are kind of limited and all the water goes through the storm sewer on the east side of 18th Avenue. If you can go to diagram 4B. 4B. Yeah. Okay, so we're all aware that we've had flooding out there. And so we've proposed three different options. And I think all you guys have, you know, you've gotten a notice. The first option is option one. So what that would include is a 36-inch culvert, storm sewer along the west side of 18th Avenue. And all the catch basins on the west side of the road would go to that new pipe. Everything on the east side would stay in the culvert as it's going. The culvert by Steve Byhoffers would be moved back to the north where that storm sewer would end. So that's option number one. So if you can go to 5B. So option B, 5B is the same as the 36-inch, but only there would be a 54-inch and everything else would be the same as what I just described. The only difference is between option one and option two is the size of the pipe. Then 6B. Okay, so 6B is, we would move the culvert at Byhoffers to north of Red Leaf Court, or of Great Bend Boulevard. We would install a berm that would go across the backside of all of the lots on Red Leaf Court. That would retain the flow behind the berm so that this area wouldn't flood. The remaining, the only thing that would change is that Red Leaf Court would then, the culverts, like I said, the culverts all drain to the north presently. They would be reversed and flowed to the south so that any water that would drain in Red Leaf Court and this area would come south along the west side. And so that's the change. So those are the three options that we proposed. The estimated cost of option one is $508,000. The option two is $614,000 and option three is $87,000. So with that, Steve, I think the street committee has made a recommendation, maybe you want to, or somebody on the street committee wants to recommend?
Well, I guess as a street committee, we've talked, we looked over the different options. But we did have, I guess, some other questions or concerns that we had talked about as a street committee. We were looking at option three, the last one. But what we also were looking at and talking, and I think we had done some talking with the city engineer too, about the culvert, because I think it had, that had a 12-inch culvert listed in option three. And we had talked about if that could be an 18-inch culvert. And then we heard that a dual-wall arch that has a flat bottom to the culvert would increase the flow better. And then if I'm understanding it right, then if it was an 18-inch culvert going that way, the increased flow, that comes out on River Road into a 54-inch culvert, right? So we were just looking at option three, but we wondered if we could look at the 18-inch culvert with the dual-wall arch. And then the other thing that we talked back and forth about was that berm or dike that you're talking about by Great Bend Boulevard and back in that area. If there's any option of building up the road there or berm, you know, which option would be better?
So the present dirt road on Great Bend Boulevard is in the right of way. So what we're envisioning is putting the dike on the north side of that so that road can still remain. Or we, I mean, that can be something we can discuss too. But it's, it should be in that right of way. So, and that 18-inch would be fine.
Yeah, I think overall, I mean, those were, you know, we were looking at trying to do something out there, but not making it so costly on everyone living out there that, you know, is looking at these costs and their property and what, how that can affect. But yes, year after year of having flood damage and that kind of stuff to your property. Also, we understand how much money people have put into repairs year after year when floods happen out in that area. And so I guess option three was the one that the street committee was approving. But like you said, looking at that culvert increase and then having more discussion on that berm or the road, those would be the things we'd look at.
Just out of my curiosity, on option one, you said there were three tile? One is a 36 and that's the only one that's still raining?
Yeah, so the one that got connected to the 33-inch that goes to the north is the 36 that goes across the diagonal. At a diagonal from the northeast quadrant of 18th and River Road to the southwest quadrant of that street. And then there is a 54 arch and right beside it, that right now doesn't take any water. And then there's a 36 east of there that doesn't take hardly any water anymore either. You know, just because of 17th Street being built, 17th Avenue being completed, all those act as kind of a dam where the water originally went. So those culverts are not, you know, are not taking water like they originally were. I think that's what you're asking, right?
I guess, I, I'm not a, but I, you know, you said they weren't working and I thought, well, maybe they're plugged. And if they work, would there be anything we could do about that?
No, they're not plugged. It's just that with all the housing, they're acting as dams and so the water just can't get to them anymore.
All right, so I think with that, we'll open the public hearing, which is now open. If you have any questions or would like to speak, you can approach the podium. Is the mic turned on? Okay. Okay, there's a button on top to turn the mic on. Please state your name and your address. Generally speaking, there are three minutes to be at the podium, which I'll keep an eye on. But if you want to go longer than that, you can come back up when somebody else is gone with their time. Yeah, after everyone's had a chance. So with that, is there anyone that has public comment or questions? Okay.
I thought I could speak loud enough. Anyhow, I've lived there since 1991, gone through all four floods. On the, on the paper that I got, it said there was a flood in '92. I disagree with that. It was May 7th, 1993, when I woke up because my furnace was running and it was bubbling. Anyhow, I disagree with the option three. If you live down there where me and Steve Byhoffer live, you don't want option three. It has caused probably a whole lot more damage to my house, my next-door neighbor's house, and I don't want Steve's, but we took the brunt of all that water. And you guys must have to, you better believe it's a pain in the butt and it's also very concerning that we got to live that way. And we pay the same taxes as anybody else does in this city. But what do we get? They get, they, oh, last time, last year, they had a pump down there pumping water, but they had to move it to the mayor's kid's place to pump his water first. He's no longer mayor, I don't know why. But I, I'm very disappointed with that recommendation. Either one of the first two would serve me a lot better. When you wake up and you can't, and you don't want to drive through three foot of water in the street because it's going to wreck your brakes and all that stuff, and you can't go somewhere. My wife missed work because of it. And it's, it's, it's simple and economics. You can't, insurance doesn't cover stuff, believe it or not. But if you live high and dry, you don't have to worry about it. This is getting very old to me. And I'm growing older as you speak, as I speak. And it's, and it's not a good deal. I, me and Steve, I think, are the only people that are still there that were there originally. But we, we keep talking, so. He's now retired, so now we got something to talk about. Anyhow, I noticed Dennis Johnson moved out of the neighborhood, so I, just in time, Dennis, just in time.
Just three things I want to tell you that you're wrong on.
Okay, what?
My son lives there now.
Okay.
So we're still there, we still own it.
I know.
And in defense of the mayor, when he was pumping the water south, that was the right thing to do. Because if you, if you go to, Steve, if you can go to diagram three. Yeah, yeah, one of those diagrams. So as I stated before earlier, all the culverts on the west side of Red Leaf Court go to the north. So when they pumped the water to the south and got it over the watershed and came down this way, it was actually taking water out of the watershed. So in defense of the mayor, that was the right thing to do.
Well, that's great. Thank you, Dennis, I really appreciate that. That's about all I have. All I have to say is either options one or two is good for me. The other one is worthless to me, thanks.
And the third thing I remembered is I was there a long time before you were there.
I know you were. But, but, yeah. Well, maybe it never flooded when you were there. Well, water never got all the way down the street to your place until last year. Anyhow, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Bill Inman, 1870, Red Leaf Court. I just got technical questions, Danny, for you guys. Of those three options, how much surface water are we talking in an event to handle, is being handled in each of those situations? And then always my ask is, Red Leaf Court has flooded with 10-inch rain, an 8-inch rain, a 4-inch rain. Just curious, you know, there's budgets to it, but what are we accomplishing with them?
Mike Johnson, Johnson Engineering Group. Bill, so to answer your question, part of our analysis was looking at different storm events. So we looked at a two-year event, a 10-year event, a 25-year event, a 50-year event and a 100-year event. The 100-year event is approximately seven and a half inches. So that is very close to what we experienced in this last flood. Based on our analysis, what we're calling is kind of a hybrid because we coordinated it with the results that we saw in this last flood. And the first two options, basically you have an initial surge of the storm water. In those options, the culverts on Red Leaf Court, they get overtopped by about .1 feet. So it would stay within the road for about an hour in those storm events and then it recedes to below the catch basin elevations after that. For option three, the goal is to keep that initial surge of water behind Red Leaf Court until it can pass through the existing system.
And that was with which rainfall?
That was with the 100-year event.
Thank you. Do you have someone else?
Justin Harrington, 2405, Red Leaf Court. Lived there, I think we moved there in 2007. Third incident with the flooding. Each time, my sump pump never, would never, never gets wet. It only gets wet when we get water in our street. So I fully believe Denny's option number three would, if you keep the water away from our place, we're not going to, we're not going to get any water in the basement. And for the watershed, I just want to know why. Growing up farm boy, I don't understand the watershed, the drainage, that, all that. So I understand why everybody in the watershed is getting assessed. But my problem is, this has been going on for, since, well, this is fourth time. City has known about this. So why, I mean, all these people are here because some of them even don't even live down there. They're wondering why they're going to have to pay for it. We paid $300,000 for the berm down here. Do I think you should assess? I mean, I'll write a check for whatever I get assessed. But do I think we should pay for it? No. It should be a city pay it. It's $86,000, they should pay for it, not all these people at all. Because half the people, I mean, how many houses does it affect down there, 20? Yeah. So all these people down River Road, Maple Circle and Jameson, Great Bend, shouldn't have to pay for it. I mean, even the farmers, I feel bad for them, what their price is, what they're paying for it. So this should be a city-paid problem and not, because you paid for it $300,000, how many houses does that affect? I mean, that, and businesses. It should be paid by the city. I think that's all I got. Thank you. But I do appreciate something finally getting done. I mean, I could, the $86,000, what I spent on my basement, I could have paid for it in cash. I mean, it's ridiculous. And we, city has known about this problem. So I think for what all my neighbors have paid, the city should buck it up and pay for it.
Thank you.
I'm Dave Wells and I don't have a dress, but I got parcel number and parcel 25-02-0100. And I object and appeal to the assessment that's going to be put toward my property. I have this piece of land right here that's in CRP ground, 60 acres. And the method they use is square footage on this here. This land has no infrastructure on it, has no sewer, no water, no streets, no storm sewer, nothing. But you're assessing this property the same as you're assessing every other property by a square foot. There's 430-some acres up above this property. This is all CRP ground that I have here. There are 430-some acres of ground up above there that drains down there that's getting assessed zero. So my property, because you did it by the square foot, I have no, no benefits in this here. There's no benefits to my property and the Minnesota Drainage Authority says, in order to be assessed, you need to get some benefits. I'm not getting any benefits from this here. Would I be willing to pay some? Of course I would, you know, to help the city out. But you're assessing me $35,000 for that piece of land out there that's getting no benefits. And you're assessing the school district $19,000. So you're assessing me 40%, the school district 20%. So we're funding 60% of this project. And the average person is getting assessed between $150 to $200. And I don't know how you could justify, you know, that two people are paying 60% of this project. And that's, that's if we do option three. If you do option two, I'm going to pay $240,000. I didn't pay that much for the land. If I do option number one, I'm going to pay over $200,000 because of the method you used. But I'm appealing it because Minnesota Drainage Code says, in order for you to assess, there's got to be a benefit. I have no benefit there. I'd be willing, you know, there's other options I think out there. One option is, you know, build a sediment pond in there, collects on that water that's coming up from that 400-acre, 80 acres up above. I'd be happy, happy to sell the city for what I paid. So you build a sediment pond, take the dirt out of there and build a berm around there. That's no problem. You got a drainage above there that's going into a ditch up above my property that's running down to 18th Street. up above my property that's running down to Eighteenth Street. And we gotta, you gotta control valve there so you can shut it off. But what happens, it overflows, goes over the road and goes on the west side of Eighteenth Street, down the street, crosses over and floods the, the properties there. This property, this is a thing that's been going on for years and years. The city administration knows this problem has been there. You, you've worked for the city for twenty years, Mr. Nasby. You should've been budgeting for this project years ago, that you knew there's a problem there. You increased the drainage up above here after that infrastructure was put in. The drainage system should've been budgeted for this. Now, the city, for forty years, have always paid for storm sewer. They unpaid for street, water, sewer, or gutter, but they paid for the storm sewer. So all of a sudden, after forty years, we're gonna start assessing the property owners? That's not right. And I don't, I don't, I don't think that's what we're after. I feel for these people, you know, that do have water in the basement. I, I'd contribute, but I'm not willing to contribute sixty percent or forty percent of the project. That's, that doesn't make sense. Especially when there's no benefit on my side of it. You know, I got CRP ground, I'm holding back that water. If that CRP was put back in road crop, imagine how much more water would come down there? As long as I own it, it's always gonna be CRP. And that's gonna, that filters that water. You put a sediment pond in there, you're gonna hold back that water. It may get there sometime, but it's gonna take a while. By that time, all the storms are gonna be caught up. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Holly Anderson, and I live at two seven two one, um, Kalish Road. And I first have to say I'm not opposed to this because I've been through floods and blood, sweat, and tears, and I understand basements and how they get flooded and how heartbreaking it can be. Uh, we actually moved to two seven two one Kalish Road because of it. Um, the question I have tonight is how the different lots on our property were decided on how it would be assessed. For that property we purchased, um, Tog Quering actually is keeping most of the far- all of the farmland. And then, um, it's kinda hard to explain, and it, this might be a question for, um, the Johnsons. In, let's see, the county or country acres, um, block two, fi- um, lots five, six, seven, eight, and nine. I just don't understand how those are being proposed to be assessed when, um, they're not even in the watershed. And I can point to them once you get closer to it. So five, six, seven, eight, and nine. They're not even in the watershed. They're
They shouldn't be in there. No, ones that should be in there are eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
And they are in it.
Oh, it's the eight, they're across the, on the other side, it's block one, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. It's those on the north side of, um,
On the notice, it included block two, lots five, six, seven, eight, nine, and then, actually, five till the end. And then it had block three and four, the total amount. And then block one, it included eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve.
I think that would be the, block three, there might, there might be a, maybe a mistake cause it should be one, two, three, four, five, a block three, one, two, three, four, five, a block four, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, a block
Two. Eight, nine, ten, and eleven.
Twelve, a block one, is where it should be.
Okay, cause I think it stated five, six, I don't know, that, you're saying yes? I was just confused because I would assume that the pond would accumulate the runoff water for those, and in addition, it wasn't in the watershed.
It's in, it's, it should be block one, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, block two.
Should be ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Should be block
Four. One through five, I think, or one through six. I just, I just wanted an explanation at why those five were in it because they weren't, they weren't in the watershed, they wouldn't be benefit from it, and no other properties south in that, um, Great Bend Boulevard would be it. So that was my only question. Like I said, I've been through floods. I'm not opposed, I just didn't understand why those five lots would be included, so. That was it, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Rory Linville, nineteen hundred River Road. And I'd just like to, uh, touch on a few key points that Mr. Wells brought up, that there's four hundred acres outside the city limit. And that's where most of that water comes from. And I don't feel that it's fair to assess us people for somebody else's water. And also in regards to the dyke down here, that was, uh, who paid for that? That was not, that was assessed citywide, I believe. And that you've never charged for storm water assessments in the past. And also the culverts, that water always used to run down the east side ditch and then kinda meander through the houses and come out by, uh, where Al Balloon lives. And there's a, like a fifty-six inch arch pipe there. And then there's like a thirty-six inch arch pipe going into town before you get to, uh, that next road, whatever that is. And the water always used to go through there and then go through those pipes. The water doesn't go through those pipes anymore. It can't get to it. And I think an option would be to open up the, uh, open ditch along the east side and also upgrade the open ditch culverts on the west side. And, uh, take a look at that, I think it would solve the problem. That's the way the water used to run, so. That's all I have. And I'm not opposed to, uh, an upgrade out there either. But I don't feel we should have to pay the amount that we're being assessed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Steve Buyhoffer from eighteen-ten Red Leaf Court. I have a problem with the assessment also. I don't think we should be assessed for this. And I also own two lots behind my eighteen-ten house lot, which are empty lots, they're not, I mean, there's no utilities or anything there, and I'm being assessed the same amount for those as I am my, where my house is, which I don't think is quite fair. You know, there's no benefit to that for an empty lot. It doesn't have any utilities or anything, storm sewer, electric or anything. You know, it's not furnished, so. It seems odd that they would assess that, an empty lot, the same as a, where a dwelling is. Uh, I also don't think we should have to have any assessments because in my mind, and I've been there since nineteen ninety, so I've been through all this crap. It seems to me that the, the city has allowed the development around that area and hasn't done anything to prevent the water from being an issue. They should've planned ahead and made sure that the watershed and everything was taken care of when they allowed some of these other developments. So, and I don't know how that area ever got built. I know Phil Johnson was part of it, and Donnie was, uh, the, uh, city inspector back then, and but I don't know how they ever, like, how did they approve the Red Leaf Court design? Because the storm sewers off the streets don't go anywhere. They just dump into the ground to percolate through, you know, holes in the ground. They don't hook, they don't connect to the storm sewer. So in my mind, it was never done right from day one. And to me, I think that's the city's responsibility to make sure it's up to snuff and can handle the now, I realize things have changed since that area was developed, but they should've made adjustments for that all along. And not just waited now and forty years later and, and trying to tack on assessments, so. I feel for, you know, the farmer there, geez, I can't imagine the logic of assessing him that kind of money for something like that, but I just think this has been ongoing problem for a long time, um, and I just don't think we should be assessed for it. Another couple of questions I had for Danny and Mike are, uh, the first two options, what size were the culverts?
First one was thirty-six, the second was fifty-four.
The fifty-four, is that that oblong?
No.
It is? Cause I didn't think, I know we had meetings, it's been several years ago. I thought they said like forty, forty-two was the biggest because of the slope, lack of slope. It does work, okay.
There was a fifty-four inch underneath River Road right now.
Yeah, that culvert is, yeah. But I, I didn't think there was enough slope from like my place to the river. There is, okay, okay, cause I thought that was a problem. A few years ago, they were concerned, so they were talking about that oblong, whatever you call that. Weird shape, huh? Okay. All right, that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else care to speak?
Dave Wells again. What's happened here, and the gentleman made an excellent point. The zoning and planning of Wyndham failed. That original thing, but you've added on, you've added on the, the county shop, you've added on, up on the hill by the golf course, you've added all that extra drainage to this here system that wasn't designed for that. So had the city been planning ahead of time, knowing that this, this system had to be improved, there wouldn't be, it would be taken care of, just like down at the Island Park. The city stood the expense of that there. And that's, I think, where, where it should go. And the county right now is working on drainage. So maybe an avenue to go to is work with the county and see if you can, you know, work with them on some of this drainage and that there. In Great Bend Township, maybe you should, you should, uh, work with them to see if you can also get some support from them on this here drainage. And you're right, the water's coming from up on the top of the, uh, county shop and that there. So you need to try to work with some of these other groups, I think, before you just propose to do this project and, and you know, I really feel for the people that got water, cause I've had water in my basement before. I know what it is, you know. But I, I just don't believe you can assess properties that aren't gaining benefits from it. And if you do it one place, you gotta do it the other places too, so. I think you gotta work with the county, or do what's right and have the city pick up the drainage on this here, um, option three, and have it resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else care to speak?
Uh, Dave Galonia, eighteen-thirty, Red Leaf Court. Couple of questions on the proposal, option three. What's the total distance you're looking to go down that road?
We're gonna go Uh, it'd be five lots, so it'd be down to where, um, uh, she just built new house. Yeah, Kit, yeah, Salida.
Okay, and so what happens to all the water that comes around her house then?
Uh, her, her house is high, you know, the dyke would be put up at an elevation so that she'd be fine. Cause it, um, the water floods, you know, back in the field behind there, and we, that's what we're trying to do, just keep the water back there and not let it come onto Red Leaf Court.
Okay, now those five lots that you're proposing that you're gonna put a dyke in front of, right? What do these people do with those five lots? They just forever have a big dyke sitting there?
It, it's not gonna be very significant.
Okay, so how much water can that thing stop? Proposed?
Well, it goes, it comes up to an elevation so that it doesn't o- overtop that dyke.
Okay.
That, that's the, that's the key. What's, what's the elevation, Mike?
What I'm asking is, how much water do you plan on that stopping? Or slowing?
Well, it'll, it'll flood like it does now, just that it won't come into Red Leaf Court.
Okay.
That's the only, the only difference, um, be, like, like, um, Jason said, we'll keep the water out at Red Leaf Court.
All right, just sounds like you're pushing the, pushing the envelope down there.
Well, it, it's gonna go to the sa- the water's gonna go to the same place as it is now. The only thing, like I said, the only thing we're gonna do is keep it out of Red Leaf Court. We move the culvert by, by Hoffers behind that dyke so that, you know, the water doesn't have to come that far down. And then we're gonna
Culvert size?
No, no, we don't have to. But then all the water that's on the east side of, or on the west side of Red Leaf Cor- or, uh, Eighteenth Avenue, all those culverts, instead of running north, will now run south. Down to the intersection of, the northwest intersection of Eighteenth and River Road. Cause there's already a culvert there. We would just run that, that down to that culvert. Yeah.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak? Anybody else that would like to speak at the public hearing? Last call? All right, we'll close the public hearing. And do you have any closing comments, Dennis?
I think everybody's kinda brought up what, um, their concerns are, and I think, I, hopefully, we've answered their concerns or what they've brought up, so, um, I, I think any of the options would work. Obviously, option two, or one and two are the most expensive. But they have some more benefits that option three doesn't have. And that will, you know, and like on Dave Wells' land, um, option one and option two will get rid of that water in a, in a shorter period of time because you got another culvert. But, um, ultimately, it's all gonna end up in the same, um, spot down at the Des Moines, the Des Moines River, so. But it, you know, what we're trying to do is just make sure that, uh, Ri- Red Leaf Court doesn't flood with any of these options.
Counsel, does anyone have questions for Dennis or Mike?
If I would have one, and that is, if all that water goes down to Des Moines River, what happens to these houses down here a little ways? Is it gonna flood back up Perkins Creek and into like where, uh, Shoemaker used to live? Not Shoemaker, but is it, you know, cause he's always, that Perkins Creek has always flooded also. You know, I, you know, are, are, is, no matter which of the three options, is it gonna solve all the problem?
You know, the Des Moines River is its own situation, and Perkins Creek is their own, the, this, um, you know, if we, if we do option one and option two, obviously the water will get down there faster. But in the overall's watershed, this is insignificant. So I, I suspect it wouldn't raise the water level a hundredth of an inch, or a hundredth of a foot. You know, you, you, so, any, any of these options you do. Cause there's just so much watershed and under Des Moines and Perkins Creek that it won't make any difference.
Anybody else have any questions?
I agree with, uh, Mr. Wells on his, um, of s- his value of his land, what they're gonna try assessing it with. That's an extreme amount of money that they're trying to make one person do versus everybody that's looking at it, and I feel for everybody out there too, but at least I, I don't understand how that, how that number got even that far up the hill. When he is, he's the only ones getting assessed versus, because I even asked you that question about coming down from the, the state shop out there now and all that water. And I, I do understand it is, it's out of our hands with that stuff, but is there something we can do for him as far as backing that number down a little bit? Because that, that's quite a bit for one person, they have to fund sixty percent of the whole project.
I mean, that's a prerogative of the city council, is to assess it a, a different way. I mean, you could assess it by a lot, but, um, is, that's usually not very fair either. So, no matter what you do, um, you know, somebody's gonna say that it's not fair. Um, and, you know, if I have a, a, a four acre lot, and, um, I can subdivide it two, three times, um, you know, and, and is that fair that I get a, you know, say that you went by the, by the lot? Um, and then all of a sudden, he subdivides after you have this hearing, um, he, he got an advantage. So, I don't, I don't know, typically, storm sewers, if they're ever assessed, are assessed by the square foot, because runoff is runoff. I suppose you could, um, you know, if you wanted to, we could evaluate how much lot, each lot has for runoff, and you could proportion it that way. But that's a big, big undertaking to do that. But, um, then, if you do it that way, Dave would still have a, you know, because he just has so many acres. Um, no matter what you do, unless you just charge him for one lot, um, and then if you do him by one lot, everybody else is gonna, their number's gonna increase significantly. So, I don't know if that, if that's a fair way. I mean, that's something you, as a council, would have to decide, I can't decide that, you know, we gave you one option. And maybe it should go back to the street committee and, and, um, you know, and have them flush through some of these ideas. I, I, what do you think of that, Steve? I mean, that's, yeah.
I think that would be, well, on a scale of right and wrong, what's right and wrong for everybody is just, for me, my, I just, I seen that number, it's a hard pill to swallow. I mean, the, the, I, I don't know his financial situation, but he worked his butt off to get where he's at right now. And to have somebody reach in and pull that, it's gotta be a kick in the gut. And for all you people out there with that watershed project out there, and it's, there's no right and wrong or fair thing, but something like that, that's sixty percent of the one project, that's asking quite a bit of one person. And I, I do think we should send this back to the street department, have them relook at some of this stuff and come up with something. I, I'm not gonna say fair, but I'm, just something different, I suppose, what I'm looking at, because that's asking quite a bit of one person, I know I couldn't do it myself.
If, if you would do that, um, and you change that, we'd have to have another hearing.
I don't know, Dennis, I just think, you know, Dennis and I are on the street committee together, um, so I'm looking at, should we bring that back?
By like the entire council. You know?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of different things got brought up tonight, I don't know, you know, bringing it back to the street, we can talk about it, we can all talk about it here and see what the other council members, um, feel too. I, I guess I would like input from other council members, what your thoughts are.
Uh, after hearing, uh, the, the comments, uh, it strikes me that there are more options that do need to be looked into. And even if some options could be, uh, significantly cheaper, that's part of it, of course, but it's also about, uh, actual mitigation. Uh, figuring, figuring that out, and then we have to discuss too about, uh, we have to at least talk about the assessment, uh, part of that. And if that's something that, uh, would be, uh, able to be changed, or should it be changed, then we need to talk about that as well. So, I definitely want to have that conversation. So, I think that, um, we, uh, should, uh, definitely, uh, send it back to the, uh, street committee. And, um, we could offer some more stuff if there's anyone in the public who has, um, like, uh, significant information you'd like to give to the street committee, they will certainly look at it. Um, and, uh, viable options are, are very much welcome to be discussed and looked at.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to send this back to the street department and have other options looked at, and ask for input from wherever, wherever we can get the help from, I guess.
I, I would just suggest if it goes back to the street committee, that Steve be involved and, and Denny be involved also.
Yeah, we could do that, have, have the appropriate people involved on this one and have them do what they can to... I, I don't want to say right or wrong, because everybody's done their diligent to put this together and worked hard to get it. And I, I'm, to me, I'm on top of the hill, so what's right for me is not right, right for you guys. So, I'm just saying it's, let's, let's just try to rework this so it's in the ballpark of what we want, everybody's division, everybody's looking at. So, we get the right eyeballs and everybody's eyeball on this. So, I just would like to make the notion, motion to bring it back to the street department and put all the right people in the right places.
I guess I have, I have my thoughts on, on some of this too, uh, I'm not prepared to speak on it tonight, but, uh, I'd like, I think we could talk about it.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to send this back to the street committee for further discussion involving all appropriate people.
And then we could look at what Jenny brought up tonight with the culverts too.
Great, thank you. Is there any further discussion on this?
I guess I would like to involve Dave in it also, Mr. Wells.
I appreciate that. But I'm willing to contribute, I'm not against opposed to that, but it's so unbalanced.
Any further discussion here?
No, I think, you know, we can discuss it at street, but I just kind of overall, from what I'm hearing from the majority of people that came here to speak tonight, um, I didn't hear a whole lot opposed to option three. Um, I was hearing more that we're all right with that, um, but I was hearing more about, I guess, most of the people that came up was more about the cost and feeling the city should pay it versus, um, the homeowners, or also then what the proportion is of who pays what. Um, and so that's kind of what I'm trying to get at. I mean, the, the street committee was looking at option three, but also looking at some tweaks to it. And so if we went with option three and looked into these tweaks, overall, I'm hearing that we want to look into how it's funded and how it's paid for versus going for option one or two, except for a couple of you that said, yes, we don't want three, we'd rather have one or two. The majority of you, I'm hearing, three is okay, but it's just who's paying for it. So, I just want to make sure I'm understanding what I'm hearing tonight.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here, and thank you to the public for coming and sharing all of your concerns. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but we do appreciate you coming and speaking and being kind and respectful, thank you all, thank you. I'm done with taking five, we'll have a, I'm sorry, what? Okay, we'll have a short break. Seven thirty to seven thirty-five, we'll have a short break, we'll see you in five.
That, that keeping water from, you know, in some of our streets to, to, sort of, streets. So, that was more for public infrastructure, it wasn't separate park, but it was more for public infrastructure parks. It's five thousand dollars versus twenty thousand dollars. So, it's, you paid for it, you didn't pay for it, like a normal subdivision, it's six, it cost a, so back in the day, these were, whenever that was all, those were the cities.
All right. We're back. So, just to verify, having made the motion to send this back to the street committee, we do not discuss the resolution ordering improvements. So, therefore, we move on to planning commission, the variance at sixteen oh five Sixth Avenue.
Matt Fast, building and zoning. The applicants, Dustin and Ashley Harold, filed an application requesting a variance to allow the installation of a front yard fence. The applicants live on a corner lot at the intersection of Sixth Avenue and Seventeenth Street. The application specifically concerns the area of the fence that would peril Seventeenth Street. Pursuant to city code, corner lots are considered to have two front yards, one on each side that fronts a public street. City code section one fifty-two point four-two-four D requires that front yard fences shall not be more than four feet in height, must contain a gate on the side facing the street at its minimum of three feet in width, and have no more than sixty percent opacity of screening. On September ninth, following the public hearing and review of all application materials, comments from the property owner, and city code information, the planning co, planning commission approved a motion to recommend that the city council deny this variance application. Subsequently, applicant Harold submitted an agenda request to speak at the September sixteenth city council meeting and proposed a compromised location for the fence. At December, September sixteenth meeting, the city council voted to refer this matter back to the planning commission for review of the proposed compromised location for the fence, which they had not previously seen. City staff consulted with city attorney Ron Shammle, and on October fourteenth, the planning commission reviewed the proposed compromised location for the fence and potential findings of facts and conditions for the approval of the compromised location of the fence. On October fourteenth, the planning commission approved a motion recommending city council approval of the compromised location for the fence and the following conditions on the variance. One, the proposed fence does not block the vision triangle, either at the neighbor's driveway or the intersection of Seventeenth Street and Sixth Avenue. The compromised location of the fence would line up with the front of the neighbor's garage and would not interfere with vision from her garage. Three, the proposed fence will not extend farther towards Sixth Avenue than the back of Harold's house. And four, a three-foot gate shall be installed in the fence in a location to be term, determined by the building official. With that said, we're looking for recommendation to approve the... With that said, we're looking for recommendation to approve the variance application submitted by Dustin Harold and Ashley Harold, requesting a variance to allow the placement of a front yard fence on the Seventeenth Street side of their property. The requested approval is based on the compromised location for the fence, and also the conditions to be placed on the variance.
I'd make a motion to approve the variance. With the, with the four conditions.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made, and second, is there any discussion?
I'd just like to say I'm glad that this got brought back, it got discussed, and some compromise could be worked out, so, uh, thank you for your work on that.
And also thank you to, um, excuse me, uh, Dusty, and, uh, the others that were involved there, uh, for bringing this forward, and for being flexible even. Appreciate that.
I also would like to thank everybody, I think this was handled beautifully, I mean, considering that a compromise came forward. I know you have lots of work into this, so thank you, and to the planning commission, and for Dustin and Ashley, they seem happy. I was at that meeting, and they seem good that this is all, um, that a compromise has been met, so I very much appreciate everyone's work in it. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Next up, number five, EDA Childcare Strategic Supply Plan.
Uh, you received a copy of the memorandum of agreement from First Children's Finance. First Children's Finance applied for a grant on our behalf, it's a technical assistance grant that was submitted to the Minnesota Department of Children, Youth, and Families. The grant doesn't provide any income into the city, it doesn't have any expenses that go out of the city, there's, there's no financial transfer, one way or another. It's just for, um, First Children's Financial to, our finance to provide us technical assistance as we're planning this new childcare center. So what you have in front of you is just, um, we're asking that you accept the award of technical assistance for the, um, Childcare Strategic Supply Plan, and then approve the memorandum of agreement that you received a copy of, and then ratify my signature, um, when we received the MOA from them. I met with Steve, asking him if, if it's okay to sign this, or if it needed to go before the council first, and since there's no transfer of funds one way or another, it doesn't impact any of our finances, so, I've signed it, but it does need your approval to ratify it after the fact. Oh, and, yes, I'm sorry, it went before the EDA bor- board before it came here, so.
Does anyone have any questions for Sonia? So, do we need three separate motions? Okay. So we're looking for one motion to accept the award of technical assistance for the Childcare Strategic Supply Plan.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to accept it.
I'll second.
Motion has been made, and second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the First Child, or Children's Finance and the City of Wyndham for this assistance.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made, and second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And I'll make a third motion ratifying Sonia's, uh, signature on the MOA on the behalf of the City of Wyndham.
I'll second that, too.
Motion has been made, and second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Sonia, thank you for your work on this. Next up, we've got two resolutions for grant agreements from Campier Financial Fund for Rural America. Kristen, do you wanna talk about yours, or we can just run through it? Not on mine. Would you like to come up?
Kristen, fourth Wyndham ambulance, um, I had applied for a Campier Financial grant, and listed, um, two different pieces of equipment for the ambulance, they were, um, stretchers and extraction splints. And it was four of each for each rig. We were awarded a grant in the amount of nineteen hundred, uh, forty, okay, and that was the quote that I had for, um, purchasing that equipment. And that was what the grant was awarded to Wyndham ambulance, so, need a resolution to accept that grant.
I'll make a resolution to accept the ambulance grant that she just spoke about.
I'll second that introduction of the resolution.
Resolution has been introduced, and second, is there any discussion?
It's just great that you're always looking for grants and opportunities to help out, so thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you for taking the time and keeping an eye out on that stuff, appreciated. Any other discussion? We'll have a roll call.
Esplin.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Resolution is introduced, grant agreement is final, thank you, Kristen. Next up is the grant agreement with Campier Financial Fund for Rural America and the Wyndham Fire Department. And we welcome fire chief Ben Derrickson to give us a rundown on that.
Fire chief Ben Derrickson, um, I applied for a grant through Campier as well, back on August twenty-third, I applied for it. October sixth, we were notified that we were approved to grant for three thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars for nozzles for some of our trucks.
I'll make the motion to accept it. I'll second it.
Resolution has been introduced, and has a second, is there any discussion? Thanks again to Ben for keeping your eye out for these things and applying and taking the time, much appreciated. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call.
Nelson.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Esplin.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next up is the Police Department, we have the body camera, ca- body camera audit presented by Devin Koprude.
Devin Koprude, Sergeant with the Wyndham PD. Uh, every two years, per state statute, we do a body cam audit, we just completed ours, and we passed with flying colors. The project was done by Lynn Lineback Consulting out of the metro, and it was paid for by funds in the twenty-five budget.
Very excellent, we're happy to hear that.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on this? And, do we need a motion to?
A, a motion to accept the body camera audit. I'll make a motion to accept a body camera audit.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made, and second, to accept the body camera audit, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Devin. Next up is the Wyndham Area Health Community Policing Services Agreement. Steve, I'll pass that.
I'll take care of that one. Um, so, Chief Peterson, um, worked with, uh, the Wyndham Area Hospital, uh, to do a, uh, renew of our community policing agreement with them. Uh, this would be the second two-year agreement, and in this, uh, the hospital provides, uh, funding to the city for, uh, part of an officer's salary. Uh, in return, the Wyndham PD does, um, some walkthroughs of the facility, and then it also is available in case they have a need out there, either for, you know, a mental health hold, or, um, something going, going awry, shall we say. So, the, uh, hospital, um, last year, um, provided us, I, I believe it was about a hundred and twenty-one thousand, this year it's a hundred and twenty-six, so there was a five percent increase in that, um, uh, amount that they're putting towards that, and then, like you mentioned, this would run for two years. The rest of twenty-five, and, and then into twen- February of twenty-seven. Uh, there was no other changes to the agreement, other than the dollar amount, everything else is the same as it was last time. Uh, Chief Peterson noted that they enjoyed the partnership and working relationship with the Wyndham Area Health, and, um, it's beneficial to both parties.
So, do we need a motion to approve this Community Policing Services Agreement? Okay?
I'll make a motion to approve the Wyndham Area Health Community Policing Services Agreement.
Motion has been made, and second, is there any discussion? Yeah.
I prepared something here quick, I greatly appreciate the partnership between Wyndham Hospital, working with the Police Department on this, sharing costs for an officer, as it benefits both parties. I would really like to see more of this kind of thing happen to other departments. The council has talked with the hospital on possible funding, funds to go fur- for the things, like the fire department platform truck. As the hospital will start their budget, budgeting shortly, the, after the new year, I think it would be a good, good to, to have the conversation again. The council agrees to see how the new medical building went, and the hospital, bottom line, the hospital, the hospital's new budget year starts in May, and I, I do not want to wait too long to have that conversation with them, so I'd like to see if we can get them back to the table, talk if we can do some more cost sharing with other departments, that are other needs in Wyndham, besides just one, one area, and we greatly appreciate what they do for the, the Police Department, but we have other needs that we would like to share costs with, if they would do, bring, have that conversation with them, thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is the Assistant Chief Position, Steve.
So, memo, memo they got done, but it didn't get into the packet. So, Personnel Committee, uh, met with Chief Peterson, in Au- August, I believe, and had the discussion about, uh, doing some internal, uh, structural changes within the organization. And one of the, uh, requests from the chief was to, um, bring the Assistant Chief Position back. Uh, we formerly had that, uh, when Corey Hillshine was here as Assistant Chief, and then when Corey moved on, the sergeant positions were created to help provide some of that leadership and structure in the organization. Now that we've got some tenure, um, back into the department, there was, um, request to bring back the Assistant Chief Position. Um, and that was brought to the Personnel Committee, um, that was included in the preliminary budget. Um, the Personnel Committee wanted that included in the budget, so it was an option, um, going down the road for you. And so, at this time, the Personnel Committee is recommending that this position be reinstated, and filled, kind of at the discretion of the chief, uh, for the timing of it, so, I don't know if you had anything else to add to that.
No, I just, uh, I think it was a great move, uh, and I'm happy to see this, uh, transpiring, and all the good stuff that's happening with the Police Department.
So with that, we need a motion to reintroduce the Assistant Chief Position.
I'll make the motion to re- create the chief position.
I'll s- I will second that motion.
Motion has been made, and second, is there any discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have the Airport Consulting Engineering Services Agreement, and, I know you're our airport manager, Scott, I don't know which one of you would like to?
I think Scott's probably gonna abstain.
I'm gonna abstain for this, cause I'm the manager out there right now, so I'll step back.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, so, every five years, uh, the city has to do a request for proposal for professional services for the engineering out at the airport. Uh, that's a requirement, as I mentioned, from the FAA, and so we're at the end of the five-year, um, period. In the twenty years that I've been here, we've used three different engineering firms, um, out at the airport. SEH has done the work for the last ten, and so, we went through the process of, uh, putting out a request for proposal that was mailed out to a, uh, list of firms, and we also posted on the League of Minnesota Cities Classified Site to Solicit Interest. Uh, three responses to our RFP were received. The airport manager, Mr. Benson, uh, the airport chair, which is Brian Underwood, our former, uh, airport manager, Lisa Arnt from our office, who manages the airport grants and does that, uh, work for that, and myself, um, read through those RFPs, and as we had three firms, we interviewed all three of them, so we did that via Zoom, and on conclusion of that, um, analysis of those three RFPs, the group unanimously was recommending that we stay with SEH. Um, we've had good service from them, and we also have a couple of new staff, Mr. Benson and Ms. Arnt, um, being relatively new to the airport side of the work, and so we felt consistency, um, was a key there. So, our recommendation to you is that we, uh, engage SEH as our airport engineers. And there's, uh, their information is included in the packet, as far as the firm, uh, background, et cetera.
So, we, we do have a lot going on out there right now, and with, uh, some resurfacing and redoing construction, that, there's a lot going on, that's why we kinda stayed with the same people that we were comfortable with, and they've done us good things in the past, from what I was told, and I was real happy with, that came out with them.
So, with that, if someone would like to make a motion to approve the Airport Consulting Engineering Service Agreement with SEH Engineering for the Wyndham Municipal Airport.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion has been made, and second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Next up is the Personnel Hiring Recommendation for the Community Center and Arena, Part-Time Maintenance.
Tim Hogan, Park and Rec, um, so this recommendation is to replace, uh, a previous position held by Dan Castle. He has recently, um, left his position, um, so we are just filling that, uh, void with this, uh, new hire of Tony Burrell. Yeah, this is a shared position that was created, I believe, last year or the year before, I think, just last year, um, um, to help both the Community Center and the Arena, um, so it's a shared cost between the two departments for this, uh, part-time union position.
I'll make the motion to, for the recommendation of the part-time maintenance position between the arena and the Community Center.
I'll second.
Motion has been made, and second, approving the part-time hire of Tony Burrell, is there any discussion?
Just that, you're gonna get real busy here, and he's gonna be able to grab on and go, or?
Uh, it, there, there'll be some training, Community Center will probably be less, um, training involved, obviously, than the Arena. Obviously, we're, we're gonna have him operating equipment, um, opening, closing, um, all those types of things, so, uh, just like Dan, uh, we had to start him brand-new, um, with that, we'll have to do the same with Tony. Hopefully, he'll be able to, to catch on and, and get moving, but we'd like to get him going as soon as we can, we've been, ICE has been in for two We've been, Ice has been in for two weeks, we've been going full tilt already, so we definitely need the help. I still have to fill Chad Alm's position as well, so I'm still, still down another person down there.
So what I'm trying to say is to the public, just be, be thoughtful with what's going on because they are busy and they're, they're doing the best they can with what they got, so. So yeah, thank you.
And also, you know, driving a Zamboni, I don't think too many people can put that on their resume that they have prior experience with that. So there is a learning curve on a Zamboni operations. So if there are people that definitely know how to do that, they should be looking at applying at the arena.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign. Motion carries. Thank you Tim. Next up is Mayor Appointment. So we have an open seat currently on the Planning and Zoning Commission, Brett Mattson was the chair and he moved, so his seat was open. For his unexpired term, the term ends on twelve thirty-one twenty-five. I spoke with Matt in length, Mary and Tyler. This one is Ward and Precinct specific, so Tyler lives in that region and I called him on it and he came to the last planning and zoning meeting and decided after that that he would appreciate the appointment. So with that, I ask you to make a motion to approve the appointment of Tyler Patterson to the Planning Commission.
I'll make a motion to accept Tyler Patterson on the Planning Commission as per the Muro appointment.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have Contractor Payment for the twenty twenty-five Island Park burn project. Pay Request Number One is for two hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and six dollars and thirty-two cents.
I'll second it just so we can have conversation and John talk.
Motion has been made and second, is there any discussion?
Could we get a little update from John on where things are at with us? This is pay request one, I've seen a lot, a lot happen down there, but can you tell us kind of where things are at or how much more is left to go?
John Kitzberg Streets Parks Superintendent, things have moved along very quickly with Mathewitz, they've been kicking butt and taking names. So it's, the burn's all done, there's been some staking done for the shelter and everything. In a week or so, they're planning on doing some hydro seating to kind of get some winter seating done so that the dirt isn't all exposed, so. They've been moving along, tomorrow they're gonna be setting a manhole for the manway for that gate valve and everything. So the guys will grab the payloader and help them pick that up and set it down.
Just a quick question now, is the park open or is it still closed?
Open for business.
Okay.
So yes, after Mathewitz has got the construction pretty much done, it's been open for a couple of football games and everything. So if you guys want to officially open her back up again.
Yeah, I'll make.
Let's finish this one. It does look awesome down there, I was surprised at how quick that went. I haven't driven through it, but the road looks very nice and drivable, it's, just looks great. And I'm sure people are happy to see the mound gone, so it does look really good down there. Anyone else?
Well, one thing I have to keep in mind is if, if another flood is coming, there will have to be a, quite a bit of dirt brought in and put on the sidewalk along the highway to be up, bring things up to the height of that burn. The sidewalk is much lower than the burn right now, so.
If the water gets up to the burn, we're in real big trouble.
Well, why did we build it that high then?
It's to kind of keep everything level and to kind of match it all up. Someday down the road, hopefully, we can build a path along out there, so have a little walking trail and everything. And depends on what happens with the pool, there's always the dog park situation too.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that there'll still have to be dirt brought up and put on that sidewalk to, if we get a, if we get a storm that matched what we had last year.
Yep, hopefully this takes care of quite a bit, but yes, there's gonna be problems all over town like we've already seen and everything else. So we'll be hopefully able to handle most of it, one less headache to deal with and concentrate in other parts of town.
And I want to remind the public, please stay off of there till they're completely done with everything on it because they don't need to add more work to what the work they've done already. And I've driven down through there and it really does look nice and from what I can see, it's gonna do what it needs to be done. And I want to thank you guys for your hard work for all the guys you get put in there.
This is payment one of how many payments?
Is there any other discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And hopefully no change orders.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to new.
I think you were going to have a motion to officially reopen Island Park.
Do we put that under new business or we just add that in?
I think you can add this on, on this because it's germane to the topic.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to reopen Island Park as of today.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and second, declaring that Island Park is officially reopened effective immediately. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign. Motion carries. Does anyone have any new business? Hearing none, does anyone have any old business? None there either, next up is Council Comments, would anyone like to offer to start?
You know, I ain't smarter than to be quiet, anyway, here we go. With the colder weather coming in and next week is gonna be cooler for you, if there's, you know anybody or see anybody that needs a jacket or warmer clothing, please, if you got it, give it. That's just what we do around Wyndham here, we take care of each other and with the weather changing and seasons changing, just keep an eye on your fellow person, your, your neighbor and everybody else around, just so we can help each other out because it's gonna be winter pretty soon and we're all gonna need a little bit of helping hand here, so just lend a hand if you got it, thank you.
Does anyone volunteer their council comments next?
I will. I, I just thought it was great to see so many people here expressing their concerns, their support for what they feel is needing to happen. I love that, even if it is on a difficult subject or it involves things that might need to be looked into further. I want to always encourage the public to come to all the public meetings and, you know, some of the meetings are a little dry, but I think it's beneficial for the public to show up and to see how things are kind of run and I love to see that happen.
Jenny, do you have any council comments?
I would just say, you know, it's, we have a lot of departments that, you know, like we just saw here, the ambulance and the fire, everybody is looking for and EDA too with the grants and the programs and the funding. All departments are, are really good at trying to look for that and look at any help and assistance we can get with funding the different programs within their department. It's unfortunate that the city doesn't have a lot. We've applied for grants and funding for out at Red Leaf Court before and we haven't been awarded that. And so I just want people to understand that, you know, we are trying as a street department to look for grants and funding and things to help, so it's not such a burden on the public that lives in those areas. And so just so I guess that you understand, we have tried and that has been tried, but it's been denied. We continue to look for funding and I guess, you know, hearing from the public today, that's, I think the main thing was looking at how this is split up for costs. And the street department will, you know, relook at this again and come back. But I do appreciate all the comments and the public coming out and talking about this.
Dennis, do you have council comments?
I have nothing.
Nothing tonight? Nothing from Jim, Steve, have you got anything to add?
Just no, no news from FEMA on the pool appeal, that's still pending. There is a letter in your miscellaneous packet that the Minnesota Department of Homeland Security, of Homeland Emergency, HSEM, Homeland, whatever, HSEM. They are supporting our appeal, so that was nice to see that the state was supporting the city's appeal, so we'll, we'll see where it goes, but that was a noteworthy item.
FEMA had ninety days to reply to that? When did we send that in?
End of September.
Okay. Alright. What I had for council comments was to reiterate that it was nice to see everyone here at that public hearing and lots of conversation we need to have again, but it was a full house and everyone was respectful and shared their concerns and that's awesome to hear, that's how you, I think how we need to do this, we need to get involved and share your concerns. I also want to say happy birthday to Janice, she joins us nearly every council meeting and she brought us treats for her birthday. So thank you very much and happy upcoming birthday. And then the other thing I just thought of that, I don't know, if we congratulated Scott, Councilman Benson here, who at the Chamber Gala was awarded the Community Champion, which is a super big deal and when you started talking about giving coats and I just know that's your personality and did we bring that up? I don't know, I think it's noteworthy and I think we, congratulations and job well done.
I thank you very much and I appreciate everything everybody's done for me and I try to give back what I got, but I don't do nothing special, I just do me and that's what I do and I love helping with City Wyndham because it's helped me out because I am here where I am right now, but thank you guys for believing in me.
Well done, it's very well deserved and congratulations. Oh, maybe after, after the meeting here, we'll see if Mr. Benson will serenade Janice because he's really good at that on birthdays. So if no one has anything else, we will adjourn this meeting by unanimous consent.